All right, welcome everybody to our August 15th Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. Can I have everyone stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can I have a motion to begin the meeting, please? So moved Jen, second Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, everyone has a copy of the agenda. Any questions or changes? Motion to approve the agenda. Mike, Charlie, all in favor? Aye. All right. We have our student speaker. Do you want to introduce?
Actually, I'm going to turn things over, but I will just start out by saying, thank you Matt, for coming in and doing this, and Mrs. Conley, thank you for all of your work and with all of our students. Both you and Mrs. Hamm have done amazing things and we are renowned for our speech and debate. And it is such a treasure. So I'm looking forward to hearing your speech tonight, and I'll turn things over to Mrs. Conley.
My name is Irene. I am the Assistant Coach of the Speech and Debate Team at Schrader. Joanne could not be here tonight, so she asked me to fill in, and she gave me very detailed notes, so. She wanted me to talk especially about the history of the team and how proud we should be of Schrader's team, which has qualified students for state and national championships every year for the last 40 years. It's a small team, but it's pretty powerful. And in New York State, you can imagine that a lot of the competition comes from downstate. Schools in New York City and Long Island and Westchester have some of the wealthiest and most highly-coached teams, but we usually do very well. Joanne also wanted me to remind you that, some of you might not know, that in the year 2000, Rochester actually hosted the National Catholic Forensic League Tournament. And we did that in conjunction with RIT. At the last minute, RIT had some construction issues. So Webster Central School District stepped up, and two of the events were held. Policy debate was held at Thomas, and some of the other debate was held at Schrader. So that weekend, Memorial Day Weekend 2000, we brought in $1 million to the Rochester and Monroe County economy. We were second that year only to the Ryder Cup. So it's a big event, and although our team is still pretty small, we have, as I say, a long and storied history. Today, you're going to see Matthew Gressik, who is starting as a sophomore. He competed during his freshman year. And he is going to be doing a category called declamation. I'm just going to give you a short rundown, because when people hear speech and debate, they just think of arguing in CNN, but it's not really just like that. Matthew's category, oratorical declamation, is where freshmen and sophomores choose a speech that somebody else has delivered, they memorize it, and they deliver it. But they do it not as an imitation, but their own interpretation. A second oratorical event, which Matthew is thinking of doing this year, I think, is open to all grades, and that's original oratory. You can write a speech of any type and about any subject and deliver it from memory. You might have heard of Katanji Brown Jackson, who was recently appointed to the Supreme Court of the United States. She was the original oratory winner in 1988 of the National Catholic Forensic League Original Oratory Contest. So again, people go on to do great things. The third event in oratorical events is called extemporaneous speaking. Students go up to a library desk, pick one of three questions that they're offered. They have 25 minutes to write a seven-minute speech. Questions can be on any current event, culture, arts, economics, politics. So that's also very challenging. So we have some oratorical events, then of course, we do have debate. We have individual debate, which is Lincoln Douglas Debate, which is philosophically oriented. That's individual debate. And then we have team debate, which is called public forum debate. This year, we had students in Lincoln Douglas and public forum debate represented at Nationals and at State. There are also interpretation events. We have oral interpretation, where students read poetry and prose. We have dramatic interpretation, where students act out one or multiple characters. And we have duo interpretation, where students pair with somebody else and act out a scene. So there are many events. It's not just debate, there's a lot of things. As I say, Matthew is doing oratorical declamation. And he comes by his speaking naturally, but through his family, too. His mom, who's here tonight, and his aunt were both very highly-ranked speakers. They both attended states and nationals when they were students at Schrader. This year, almost all of our tournaments were virtual. Matthew has not actually ever done this speech for actual people in a room before, so that'll be interesting for him. We did have in-person Nationals for the first time this year in Washington DC. And that was, you know, very COVID-oriented, so to speak. There were a lot of hoops to jump through, but it was a wonderful event. And we were fortunate to have two Schrader alumni, Dr. Val Pacer, who works for the State Department, and Caitlin Coffey, who is in her second year at Georgetown Law. Both of those alumni judge for us at Nationals this year. So we have a vibrant team. We wanted you to know a little bit more about it. And we especially wanted to thank the Board for their continuing support, because that's always something that we've been able to count on, and it just makes our job a lot easier to know that we always have that support. So without any further delay, Matthew, whenever you are ready.
Today, I want to tell you three stories. That's it, no big deal, just three stories. The first story is about connecting the dots. I dropped out of Reed College after the first six months, but stayed around as a drop-in for another 18 months or so. So why did I drop out? Steve Jobs opening his 2005 Stanford commencement speech, leaving the graduates with one last lesson. It started before I was born. My mother was a young unwed college graduate student, and she decided to put me up for adoption. She felt very strong that I should be adopted by college graduates. So everything was all set for me to be adopted at birth by a lawyer and his wife. Except that when I popped out, they decided that they wanted to burn. So my parents, who were waiting on a waiting list, got a call in the middle of the night asking, "We have an unexpected baby boy." "Do you want him?" They said, "Of course." And 17 years later, I did go to college, but I naively chose a college that was nearly as expensive as Stanford and all my working-class parents' savings were being spent on my college tuition. After the first six months, I couldn't see the value. I had no idea what I wanted to do with my life, and no idea how college was going to help me achieve that. So I decided to drop out and trust that it would all work out okay. Looking back, it was one of the best decisions I ever made. The moment I dropped out, I could stop taking the required classes that didn't interest me in, begin dropping in on the ones that looked interesting. And much of what I stumbled into by following my curiosity and intuition turned out to be priceless later. Let me give you one example. Reed College, at that time, offered perhaps the best calligraphy instruction in the country. So I decided to take a calligraphy class to learn how to do this. I learned about serif and sans serif pipe faces, about varying the amount of space between different letter combinations, taught them a great typography drill. It was beautiful, historical, and artistically subtle in a way that science can't capture, and I found it fascinating. Now, none of this had even a hope of any practical application. But 10 years later, when we were designing Mac, it all came back to me. It was the first computer with wonderful typography. If I had never dropped in on this single course in college, personal computers today might not have the wonderful typography that they do. Again, it was impossible to connect the dots looking forward in college, but looking back 10 years later, it was very, very good. You've got to trust in something, your gut, destiny, life, karma. This approach has never let me down, and it's made all the difference in me. My second story is about love and loss. I was lucky. I found what I loved to do early in life. Was and I started Apple in my parents' garage when we were 20, and in 10 years, it had grown from just the two of us in the garage into a $2 billion company with over 4,000 employees. And then I got fired. How can you get fired? From the company you started. Well, as Apple grew, we hired somebody who I thought was very talented to run the company. And for the first year or so, things went well. But gradually, our visions of the future began to diverge, and I had a problem. When we did, our Board of Directors sided with him. So at 30, I was happy. What had been the focus of my entire adult life was gone. It was devastating. I really didn't know what to do for a while. I felt that I had let the previous generation of entrepreneurs down, that I had dropped the baton as it was being passed to me. I even thought about running away from the valley. But something slowly began to come. I still loved what I did. The Vincent Apple had not changed that one bit. And so, I decided to start over. Looking back, getting fired from Apple was the best thing that could have happened. The heaviness of being successful was replaced by the lightness of being a beginner. I was sure about it. Over the course of the next five years, I started a company named Pixar and another company named NeXT. Pixar went on to create the world's first computer animated feature film, Toy Story. It's not the most successful animation studio in the world. In a remarkable turn of events, Apple bought NeXT, I returned to Apple, and the technology we developed at NeXT is at the heart of Apple's current renaissance. I'm sure none of this would have happened if I hadn't been fired from Apple. It was awful-tasting medicine, but I guess patience will win. Your work is going to fill a large part in your life, and the only way to be truly satisfied is to do what you believe is great work. And the only way to do great work is the love that you do. If you haven't found it yet, keep it. As with all matters at the heart, you know when you find it. My third story is about death. When I was 17, I read a quote that went something like, "If you live each day as if it were your last..." One day it was certainly. It made an impression on me, and every day for the last 33 years, I've looked in the mirror in the morning and asked myself, "Is either the last day of my life what I want to do, what I am about to do today?" And when the answer has been no for too many days in a row, that's when I know I need to change something. Remembering that I'll be dead soon is the most important tool I've encountered to help me face the big choices, because all pride, all fear, embarrassment, failure, just falls away when you face a death. Remembering that I will be dead one day is the best way, I know, to avoid the trap of thinking you have something to lose. About a year ago, I was diagnosed with cancer. I had a scan at 7:30 in the morning and it clearly showed a tumor on my pancreas. I didn't even know what pancreas was. Later that evening, I had a biopsy with the doctors, stuck an endoscope down my throat into my intestines, stuck a needle into my pancreas, and got a few cells from my liver. I was sedated, but my wife, who was there, told me that when the doctors viewed the cells from under a microscope, they found that it was a very rare form of pancreatic cancer that is curable with surgery. Had the surgery, and it was fine. I really hope that I do not get this close to death for the next couple of decades. But having lived through it, I can say this to you with a bit more certainty than when death was a useful but purely intellectual concept. Nobody wants to die, even those that want to go to heaven don't want to die to get there. But yet, death is almost certainly the single best invention of life. It's the change agent. Clears out the old and make way for the new. Right now, you are the new, but gradually, you'll become the old and be cleared away. Your time is limited, so don't waste living somebody else's life. Don't be trapped by dogma, which is living with the results of other people's expectations, and always have the courage to follow your own heart and intuition. Everything else is secondary. When I was young, there was an amazing publication called The Full Earth Catalog, and it was written by a fellow named Stuart Bryant, Matt Park, Mary Menlo Park. And he brought it to life with his poetic touch. This was the mid-'60s, so it was all written with typewriters and scissors and Polaroid cameras. But it was idealistic, overflowing with neat tools, great notions. Eventually, The Full Earth Catalog ran its course, and Stuart and his team put out a final issue. On the back cover of that final issue is a picture of an early-morning country road, one you might find a few recital mentions. Below were the words, "Stay hungry, stay foolish." I have always wished this for myself. And now, as you graduate to begin anew, I wish this for you. Stay hungry, stay foolish. Thank you.
Nice job.
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much, that was amazing, Matthew, congratulations. I don't want to move on to business.
So much in that speech to think about, too. So great messages and well-done delivering, too. I thought maybe it was your life. It was great. Nice job, Matt. Good luck. Now you'll compete again this year, right?
Yes.
It'll be different, I'm sure, and everything. Will you do a different category, or is that a category you'll stick with?
I will do this category this year, because it's the last year I can do it. I hope to make Nationals this year. I did last year because I missed the qualifier.
I heard, yeah. You couldn't go or something, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I couldn't go to the qualifier, so I couldn't make Nationals.
That's good. Hopefully, we'll be rooting for you.
For sure.
Thanks. And nice job to the mom and dad and your brother. Is that your brother there that's with you, too? Only grandpa? Congratulations to the whole family, it's great having you here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next up, we're on to Board Business. We have the final reserve transfer. Mr. Freeman.
Do them off from up there?
Yeah? Yeah, sure.
All righty, now you get me for next 40 minutes or so. I'll see if I can compete. I don't know. So first up, on the Board Business this evening, is one of the first steps to finishing off the 2021-22 fiscal school year. And that is transfer final reserves for 2022. So the memo that you have in front of you is really a three-part memo, and it's structurally what the auditors require us to do based on Comptroller recommendations that have come out over the years. The first part is transfers. And we had an end to 2022 in a solid position. So you see the final 2022 transfers, and the new balances in those reserves. So why do we pick those reserves? We have conversations with our auditors and our attorneys about what's on the horizon, what's coming, where should we put some undesignated fund balance. So after those conversations, we looked, and these were the five reserves that were selected. The capital reserve, the two retirement reserves, workers' compensation, our liability reserve, and the tax retroary reserve. So that's the first part, is approving those transfers. And the second are very structural and procedural-type of movements. Part of 2022, we used $1 million worth of a reserve to offset on the revenue side. We did not end up spending that. So we're going to put that amount back into the reserve. It's kind of a structural thing. And then, for 2023, this current fiscal year, we've allocated $0.5 million as part of the budget process. We're going to take that $0.5 million out and put it in. So why can't we just put $0.5 million in? This is one of those Comptroller rulings. They like to see the two fiscal years separated out, showing the exact amount that was part of the budget for 2022 going back in, and then the exact amount for 2023. So it seems redundant, but it's one of those checkboxes we do as part of the audit and gets included in that. So that's the final reserve transfers and information for you tonight. Any questions?
Very good. All right. Motion to approve the final reserve transfers.
So moved.
Linda, second Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six nothing. Tax warrant overview.
All right. So the tax warrant is probably one of the more complicated financial pieces we go through. I'm going to take you through it, try to break it down as much as I possibly can. And just as a reminder, there's really three parts to our tax formula. These are the three huge parts for Webster. First is our tax levy, what we set, is the third. Equalization rates, which come from the state, and that is rates the state sets so that all four towns, in essence, are treated equally when it comes to taxes. And then the assessments, which come from the towns and the town assessors. So those are the three pots, you know, three ingredients that go into the tax warrant soup, per se. So let's break down those three parts for this here. Well, first is the tax levy. The $116,008,18533, that was our budgeted levy for 2023. Mind, we are below the cap by $600,000. Our levy tonight, that you've seen in the documentation, is actually going to be less than that. It's going to be less by about $103,000. Why is it less by $103,000? We are required by law to reduce further by re-leveys. So those are properties that have had special circumstances throughout the year. Maybe they had an exemption that they shouldn't have, or they missed an exemption. So we take all those properties amongst the four towns, add them all up, get that number. So we reduce our levy, because we're going to collect that again, no matter what. So we reduce our levy, so we're not collecting it twice, if that makes sense. So that is the actual amount. That's why it's different than probably what you saw and familiar with the budget process.
So basically, that's money that the taxpayers are no longer responsible for paying, because we're getting it from somebody else?
No, they have to pay it. In essence, the property had something unique, an exemption, maybe a star midway through the year, an age exemption, you know, agricultural exemption, that the timing didn't match up to the cycle of assessments. So we're collecting it for this year, and we're collecting for last year. So that's why we have to reduce our levy, because we can't collect it twice.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yep, no problem. Part two are the assessments. You can see the four towns, I did the comparison between what was last year and this year. And right off the bat, that's probably going to jump out at you, is Penfield. They did a re-eval. So their percentage change was almost 28.4% year-over-year. So that's quite a jump, all due to the re-evaluation. What's interesting, Webster stayed relatively flat, small change in Ontario and uptick in Walworth. So overall, the assessment, 28% increase in Penfield equates to 8.6% for the district as a whole. And the ratio I highlighted in yellow, that is the percentage that each town makes up of our overall assessment pot. So Penfield's 26.8, Webster's 72.8, and then the Ontario and Walworth, much smaller portions. Even with the Penfield re-eval, it did not move the needle very much in how much Penfield makes up of the district when we talk about assessments. It generally stayed in line with each other. So I thought that was the first interesting data point that we came across. But that is a large assessment change year-to-year that you normally don't see. And then next up is the equalization rates, which have a substantial impact. You can see Penfield with the re-eval moved from 85% to 100. They've moved to 100. Webster moved from 72 to 64, so that's an 8% drop. And then Ontario and Walworth both went down 6%. Those are very large year-over-year changes, some of the largest I've seen. I was predicting in a couple slides when we talked about budget, maybe a 2%. We see 2%, 3% year-to-year on the equalization, but it accelerated. I think a lot of that has to do with market value. In essence, what the state's saying is those towns are, you know, Ontario and Walworth are 6% under-market on their assessments, and Webster is 36% under-market in their assessments. So Penfield made up their 15% under-market this year. So I should take a step back and say we are at August 15th. I have seen the state change these even after this date. So it's a possibility that maybe the needle moves in September. I'm here explaining those changes to you, because that might have a difference. So that's the third, you know, ingredient in our tax warrant formula. So what does that do to our tax rates? So you can see in the highlighted section, Penfield goes down significantly with their assessed values and going to 100%. So about $5 per thousand, from 2269 last year to 1737. It's a large drop for Penfield on the rate. And then Webster, about in line, because they didn't have too much assessment growth. So 1.3% increase, and Ontario and Walworth go down as well. Even though they both dropped six percentage points on the equalization rate, normally, that equates, even Webster with an 8%, equates to 1% the equalization rate, usually equates to 1% in the tax rate. Because Penfield's assessments went up, it in essence wiped out that equalization rate change, because it was so large that 8.63% for the district over well mitigated those equalization rate changes for the other three towns, if that makes sense, the relationship between the numbers. So where were we off? Mathematically, no way was predicting 8.63%, given the history. You know, the Penfield reassessment was significantly higher than predicted. And Walworth was actually higher than normal, at 4.4%. Equalization rates, like I said, predicted 2% drops, and Webster's at 8% was very surprising when we looked at past history. And then Walworth, Ontario, was very shocked that they went down 6% because they had just done some re-eval work to get to 100 last year. So surprised in a one year, that came back down. So I think all data points into the tax warrant, made this a very unique year.
Bryant, the state gives you the equalization rate, right?
Correct.
So do you have any idea how they calculate that?
They do some market data. They do some random sampling, New York State Office of Real Property through the Department of Taxation and Finance.
So the crazier the housing market, the crazier the...
Yep. Yeah. Like, there is, I mean, there is some chatter that maybe even with the Penfield reassessment, that did not get them to 100%. That's how crazy the housing market has been. So it's, you know, like I said, the state comes in over the top and sets that. One of the questions we always get right off the bat is, what if everybody was at 100%, what happens? And you can see, that's where the size of everybody's assessments comes into play. Penfield comes back up, Ontario and Walworth come up, and Webster comes down when we get to 100%. So projected to be, Webster would come down about $4, everybody else would come up. Why are they not uniform? Why are the two Monroe County towns pretty close? If you went out six decimal points, they'd be a little off. But why are... But why are Ontario and Walworth different? It's because we're one of the unique districts in New York State, actually, that straddles two county borders and then gets sales tax. So we have to put a budgetary number down for sales tax, then apply it to all four towns. So Ontario and Walworth share of sales tax is much smaller than Penfield and Webster's. So those go together because they're in the same county, Ontario and Walworth get the same amount. So that's why you'll never see, when we're at 100%, you won't see four identical tax rates. You'll see two very close and then two that will be more than likely identical. So right now, the, by far the lowest tax rate I can say in Monroe County is if you live in Penfield in a Webster Central School District will be the lowest rate right now because to a certain extent that Penfield is subsidized by the size of Webster and how much assessment is different. And then just for everybody's now, you know, update what the star rates are, remember it's capped at 2% if you're still getting on your bill versus the rebate check that comes. Usually now they're, they're much better, comes by the end of September. And then probably my 220,520 estimate is, is probably outdated as of this morning. But this is just a, you know, sample overview of what that would do compared to last year on the average house in the district. You know, will be fluc, obvious fluctuations from that because not every house is that. Some are higher, some are lower, so.
So Brian, on, on this chart, it looks like Webster, or I'm sorry, Penfield residents are going to pay a lot less in their school taxes in 2223 versus 2122, and that's not really the case because...
Well, it depends on if you're below that mark or above that mark.
Well, if your house was 220, it was reassessed to 28, you're probably going to pay the same school taxes year on year, even though your rate went down because your base is up.
The, yeah, ideally that works if you're in, for your town taxes. You, you'll stay the same. So when they talk about the reassessment, when your town taxes come along, because it's only the town of Penfield, it's, everybody will be unique, or won't be unique, it'll be, yeah, my rate went down, my assessment went up, I'll generally pay the identical amount year over year because the rate goes down. With us, there's a lot more variables because of we're four towns and, you know, everybody's a little bit different. So it won't work perfectly as you described, that, that 220 becomes, you know, if, if everybody got a 25%, 35% assessment increase, it, it won't mathematically be perfect, so.
I'm not looking for perfect, I just want people to know, right, that people who live in Penfield aren't saving $1,170 at the expense of Webster, Ontario, Walworth. That's not the case.
No, if they were right at this mark, they'd be pretty close to it. If that's what they're going to land at, so. Any other que, I mean, it's pretty unique here, so. Fingers crossed, no more updated data points after this.
No other question? This is just for information, right? We're not voting on this.
Yeah, what you're technically going to vote on then is the actual warrant that is on the next that actually has all the formulas in the, broken down. That is for approval tonight.
So let me ask you a question. We're approving this and you're saying, and I know this has happened in the past where this, the state comes and says, yep, you're wrong, so then we have to do this whole exercise again?
So I have gotten updated data up until like August 29th where we've stopped printing bills.
And then it's, there's a hard stop that, like this...
There used to be.
Okay. Sorry.
No, this is great questions because that was, you know, we're, we've tried as a collective organization in Monroe County to get some kind of, but the problem is, is with the star changes, the state has universal access into everything. So we run an assessment report that says, you know, Penfield's got $1.7 billion worth of assessed value on Monday, August 5th. Then on the 8th, the county goes and runs it, and some ways change it because the state's added like six new star properties. So it's brought down the assessed value. And then, so it's just this all kind of rolling, ongoing thing. So we have in the past gotten like, you know, calls that, well, we left off, you know, in seven counties, the agricultural exemptions were left off, and we got to put them back in, you know, go rerun your numbers. And that's happened before. So we have in September re-approved rates that have already gone out on tax bills just because of the timing, so.
So under the current conditions, this is what we're going on?
Correct.
Okay.
Nobody has emailed me or called me as of when I came down here at 5:30 today, so this is what we're going with.
Got it. Thank you.
All good? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the 2223 tax warrant?
So moved.
Linda, second. Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six nothing.
All righty, next up, to keep with the tax theme, is for your approval, a tax search area case for Webster Woods. This is a longstanding tax search area, it goes back to 1314 fiscal year. And just for reference, that is mixed office and retail, couple restaurants real close to the ridge and Five Mile Line intersection, right there. You know, that has Hooligans, Pontillo's, and Nucci's Dance Studio, and upstairs, there's some office, just for frame of reference of what properties we're talking about. This is actually one of our largest challenges with the largest refund potentially due. So by approving this, we're really eliminating a longstanding liability and is really a good compromise on all parties because there is some empty space unused in that. So a little hesitant to go all the way with the challenge because, because of that, that there, there is some unoccupied space in that plaza that always gets accounted for and taken into account when we work through these processes. So we do have refunds to pay out, but like I said, a, a large tax search were coming off the books for the district, and the town is on board and has actually already approved this from their end at their last meeting. Any questions on the specifics or any of the data points I provided?
All right, then a motion to settle the tax cert proceedings commenced by Webster Woods in accordance with the terms as approved by Farrar Forenza. Mike moved. Second, Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six nothing. School lunch.
All right, so all good things must come to an end, apparently. So no longer universal free meals for 2223. I know we talked about this in July, that we were holding out for, you know, the suspicion that the USDA might do something over the summer, but no such luck. So this year, we're proposing moving up our lunch costs, as you can see, elementary to 290, middle, high school, both to $3, with an average of 297 across the board. County average right now is 303 for lunch, and then breakfast, 175 at elementary and $2 for secondary students. One thing that was suspended this year, normally we have a pricing model that we have to follow by USDA. We put in a whole bunch of participation and data points and it spits out, this is what you should be. As reference, back in 1920, the last time we actually had school lunch prices, it was 305. We don't have to go to that because we use our commodity dollars to offset some of our, our costs, so it lowers our, our costs there. But really going into next year, we, we had to raise prices just based on pure commodities and difficulties getting things still. So still maintaining that same principle of diverting our commodities to help lower costs, but we can't keep up with some of those food costs right now.
My elementary students want to know, are they getting their chips and their ice cream back as part of this deal?
Chips and ice cream?
Because they haven't been able to get those the last couple of years, is all...
The snack lines have been a little limited, yeah.
So the snack lines have not been functional.
Snack line is coming back.
All right, that's good to know.
Important stuff.
Yeah.
My fourth grader knew to ask when we were talking about lunch costs, so.
No, I just reloaded my accounts for next year. Apparently people in the business always got a hold of my number and treat themselves to breakfast occasionally.
It was the double lunches last year that Brady didn't realize he got charged for double lunches. All of a sudden, I was like, how is this low? Brady's like, oh no, I was getting like two lunches.
There you go.
That'll do it.
Occasionally breakfast sandwiches on the bus, down here in Spren.
Any other questions?
So families that, the, for the free and reduced lunches, the, the application is online?
Yeah, we've, online, we've automated. The application is, will be in the back to school newsletter, but everything is online through Infinite Campus.
Who should they call if they have questions?
They could send emails right, or call right to the food service office.
Mark.
And it might have been in Parent Square, I can't remember, I'm still learning on the parent end that that was live or it's going to be. I could double check on that. I know we have something going out.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing it, but just so that people are aware.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
Brian, based on what we budgeted for the school meals and what you think are going to be the use by the students, does this match these prices, match what we have budgeted and subsidized?
Honestly, no. This will be less than probably what we need to cover, but coming off the last two years, we've reversed, and we're hopeful, this is kind of going to be a year for food service where we're going to try a lot of different stuff, especially at the high schools with different menu items and change up and I get, I would say, challenge the palate to some of the high school kids and do some different bars like, you know, not like your traditional taco bar or salad bar, but change up and do some, you know, like Thai, different types of Asian cuisines, or like do a faux thing, doing some soup, like a soup bar. So we're, we know, probably in an ideal world, we could probably charge five bucks and yeah, we'll cover it, but we know that's going to scare people away. So coming off a couple of good fiscal years, we're willing to take the chance to get kids to get excited and, and get back into the program. Because in, in all honesty, it's the two high schools that drive the program. If high school kids aren't eating or participating, doesn't, it, nothing else matters. Their, the data has always shown that it's the high schools, when the high schools don't participate, the whole program kind of drops. So we're going to try some different stuff.
Can we do a high school visit on a Thai day?
Absolutely, a rice bowl, yeah, exactly, or something. Sounds good.
Motion to approve the updated prices for school lunches. Jen, second. Charlie, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six nothing.
All right, next up is a bid acceptance. So in July, we had a small bid opening just for two, two contracts for general construction and electric. This is new scoreboards and video display boards at the aquatic center with two high school stadiums. We're helped, this will improve the visual experience for graduation at both schools. So the work on this hopefully might commence before the ground freezes this, this fall because it won't really interfere with any fall athletics that are going on based on where they were designed and positioned. So real excited about this enhanced experience. Like I said, these contractors, the lowest bidder, previous positive experiences with both of them, both are currently working in the district. Javen had won the bid for St. Thomas Construction, and Bill Tiere has won the bid as well in the past for multiple electrical contracts. So very happy and very, feel very secure moving forward with the work with them.
Questions? All right, motion to accept the capital project bids for general construction and electrical contracts. Linda, second. Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six nothing. Treasurer's report.
All right, treasurer's report for June. Fairly slow month, not a lot of revenue coming in. Expenditures are, you know, really finishing up in the month of June, you know, it's 10 month salaries is a big hit there. Just want to point out one thing, if you notice on the fund balance summary sheet, you see a negative there. It's because our books are still open until the auditors come through and close them. So it's just really an accounting negative right now. That will get reversed once the auditors say, yep, that, good, 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 close them up because June 30th is, we're not done with it per se until they say we're done. And they'll be out here in a week. So that's, I just wanted to point that out, I was like, that looks like a weird number on the report, why is it there?
All right, motion to approve the June 2022 treasurer's report as presented. Jen, second. Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six nothing. Capital project.
All right, capital project planning. So just going to go over a few things, do a little summary of what was discussed in the May workshop and the July update. Pretty much the scope of work has remained the same, so we're just going to review by building for everybody of what our summary is. Start with the high schools, you know, Schrader and Thomas. Schrader is continuing some of the exterior brickwork we've worked on with the 69 and a half million dollar project to continue to replace some of that. The interior spaces, when we talk interior spaces, we're talking classrooms, casework, cabinets, floors, ceilings, lights, all that, you know, tile, just attacking as much of that as possible. Fire safety systems is the, you know, the panel box, the, the guts of that upgrading. Upgrading the generator that is outside Schrader as well to handle more, and then the stadium turf replacement. Thomas, all very similar except with the Owl expansion, Thomas with the HVAC and AC upgrades, and then the Thomas track desperately needs replacement, and the stadium turf, it's on the same exact life cycle as the Schrader stadium turf as well. The two middle schools, Willink Owl Expansion there, upgrade the generator, and then parking lot reconstruction and redesign, looking at that. Spry HVAC, restroom reconstruction here, it's kind of the, the standout between the two middle schools, desperately needed here. Once again, interior spaces here, refreshing those classrooms, the older classrooms here, fire safety systems, and upgrading the generator here as well. The sister elementary schools, the three, almost identical, Schlegel, Plank South, and Clem South, all pretty much the same exact work except the Owl expansion at Schlegel, the one difference there. Everybody else is the same because all schools are pretty much in lockstep. The brother elementary schools, Clem North and State, pretty much identical as well except State Road needs a little bit more parking lot reconstruction than Clem North. Clem North was pretty bad, so we did that in the 69 and a half. That needed to be done on a different schedule because a little bit more water issues at Clem North than at State Road. Just jinxed myself, hopefully nothing at State Road pops up now. So those are just a review there. And then our standalone style buildings, Plank North, HVAC roof here, sidewalk front entrance repair, upgrade the generator, new access road and bus loop, DeWitt HVAC, some minor roof over the back end, that 94, I believe it was 94 expansion, and then upgrade the generator and some parking lot as well there. So want to break down the financials a little bit too. So want to break down the financials a little bit too. And here's really the major categories to be done, six major ones. The first two, you know, are the self-explanatory, the building additions are the largest overall cost of work to be performed, followed by the HVAC improvements. And then that building exterior work, when we talk about that, you know, that's the outside brickwork, you know, structural repairs, the parking lots. The interior is the classrooms, the hallways, the bathrooms, roofing. And then the fire safety is the, you know, generators, the panel box upgrades, the alarm upgrades. So those are our major, you know, categories worth of work. And these numbers are, haven't really changed, haven't changed at all. We're still looking at the same amount from the last time. So total cost is 115 million. We're looking to apply 10 million from the capital reserve to bring us really to the 105 million amount of debt to be financed. So here's where the estimates really kick in. So right now, we're looking at about a 23-year project. Three years of temporary borrowing to get us through until construction's done, and then 20 years of permanent financing. So when we look at interest rates and trying to chart this out, about 145 million dollars all said and done. Like I said, those are very preliminary estimates, you know, glass, crystal ball, don't know what interest rates are going to look like, well, you know, in three, four years when we look to lock them in. Or if we're even going to be in three years in a position where we could start doing some stuff. So some early estimates. But no matter what, our state aid ratio is 76.6, we know that's locked in. And we do get interest on, or state aid on interest for the project. So look, right now, about 41.6 million dollars of local share over the life, whether it's 23, 24 years, all depends on how construction shakes out. So early estimates. So what does, what does that look like? You know, it's about a 1.1% estimated tax levy limit, increase on levy limit per year. Or about, you know, 1.3 million dollars local share on the capital exclusion. And like I said, a lot of this is very, very dependent on, you know, is work delayed, is SED backed up? You know, are things getting, are we getting product and the phasing? So just wanted to highlight, where does this all fit in the day-to-day budget per se? So this is this year's property tax formula, and I've highlighted 22, 23. And this fun green arrow is pointing to directly where this would reside. So 15 years from now, whoever is sitting here talking about this project, and if there's no changes to this levy limit formula from New York State, this is the spot in the formula, year to year, that we're going to be looking at, the 3.4 million dollars. Now, this is this year's, just in a silo, just pointing out where this lands in the formula. So that's the spot we're going to hone in on, is where's the impact? And remember, our levy limit was 2.44. When we finalized the budget, it was 1.9, just as, so this 3.4 is all the projects from 20 years before us that we're paying for right now, minus all the state aid. What's left over is the local share of the projects. So in essence, this 22, 23, state gave us some money, we had a good fiscal year, we didn't levy all the way. So in essence, we left, we did not levy all the taxes to pay for those current capital projects. And you could, you know, split hairs over which project exactly did we leave money on the table for? They're all lumped together for the purposes of the formula. So in essence, you know, the economic indicators being what they were, we didn't go to the full tax amount for those previous capital projects. That's where this hits in this formula. So then, narrowed down even further, you see all of our different debt services. So debt would increase when the project reached its maturity and everything was said and done. But also, the building aid would increase, so would lead to larger capital exclusions at the bottom. So these aren't the projections, but I'm just using this year to highlight where it would show up, whether it's in three years, five years, 10 years, 15, 20 years. Questions on that? All righty. So why one versus two separate propositions? So 2016, district voters approved 43 and a half million. And then two years later, 2018 was 69 and a half, for a total of 113 million. So in two years, there was 113 million there. And the 2016 project was coming right off of the 2015 BCS too. So you see, there's that cycle, building condition survey, district does the works to go with it. So why one versus two? And I'm going to, number one is flexibility, to be able to adjust to market trends, really cost protect. In the 2016 steel pricing, and I'll use the Spry Cafeteria as a perfect example, that was right at the same time, right when we were going to bid for that, that the steel tariffs and the market spooked and steel spiked. And so we were seeing 25, 30% higher, higher prices. But we were kind of boxed in, we couldn't do anything because that was the only project we had. Had we had one larger project and combined them, we could have delayed that and waited for it to come back down. There was a lot of things that we took out of that Spry Cafeteria. We made the elevator shaft a little smaller. We changed up some of the tiles, some of the finishes to try to, you know, help protect, rather than having to go back out and ask for more money, which I believe two districts did around that same time because they couldn't afford, based on the proposition they had. So that's just one of the advantages. Long-range planning, you know, the phasing would allow us, you know, to approach the tax cap and debt service. So maybe 10 years from now, there is something economically, you know, that is not advantageous. Maybe we could take a look at, you know, we still have more years left, or we're not done with the project. We could look to adjust there. Economies of scale is a big, is a big one too. You know, when it comes to bidding, we do a first phase, there's a company here, they're doing a great job. They don't have to escalate their costs up when they go to bid. So it's, it's a money saver. Because they're already onsite and ready to go for the second phase. We haven't closed it down, they haven't gone back to whatever home base it is and have to revamp and re-up those. Only have to do one seeker, so it actually is cheaper because that's a legal cost. And that's the state environmental review or the state historical preservation review as well. And then the bidding, we could bid a whole bunch early and lock people into it for however many years we want to be able to. So if it's good, say, oh, in three years when we get to that phase, you're still going to keep that number? Sure, great, let's do it. And we, the reverse could happen. Nope, we're going to reject this because they're all too high, and we're going to push this out three years. So there's a lot more flexibility with the one proposition as the overarching theme. Questions on that? All right. And then timeline, possible board approval this evening. We would immediately get started on those environmental and state historical reviews. State historical review, we're not touching anything that is of historical significance. You know, it's, we're not, you know, building a new, that is really, oh, you've bought land and you're going to build something new on it. We have to check to make sure it's not, you know, a heritage site or, you know, an Iroquois Indian, you know, old site where you could dig up historical artifacts and vice versa. So with some of our friends in the southern tier have to deal with occasionally. But the environmental impact with, we'll have to get started because we are doing the additions at the three buildings, so. And then look for September adoption of a vote resolution. October, wrap up that environmental review. To over November, publication of the legal notices, and then December 13th, vote. Questions?
So just, go ahead, go ahead.
Just the estimation of when all the projects would be completed for this particular one. I know that some of the, some of them are going to be completed earlier than others.
Yeah, I would say probably 10 years. When we get down to the nitty-gritty. I think we, the easiest one right now, we've had preliminary conversations as an architectural team, the additions could get started would be the first thing with some of, and the HVAC, because that takes a while to get the mechanical reviews at the state level. But the additions, you could do while school's in session because they're all outside the building proper and can, you know, start digging and get that part. But some of the other stuff could be phased down the line where, you know, we're out five, six, seven years.
No, go ahead. Just to clarify, because these, like, looking back at slide number 10 where it talks about the categories of work to be performed, these are some big numbers, especially the Owl additions and the HVAC. Could you just kind of explain for the benefit of all of us, kind of, what is the benefit of bringing those special education programs back to the district? Because that's a big number for additions, but it really, it's more than just having our own kids stay in our district, but it's also a huge financial difference for us, not paying somebody else to teach our own kids.
Right, I think there's two programmatic, and before I get a little too outside my wheelhouse, two huge from my lens, the programmatic advantages. Is one is, it's much better for the kids to be here. It also gives them their own kind of space. Because, you know, the Schlegel Owl space is pretty solid. I mean, because it's the old, you know, could either be, you could either call it the old fifth grade wing or the old kindergarten wing, depending on which building it was. But it was kind of separate to give those older kids that transition year before they went. That was the design of the building. So they kind of have their own little space that they could be comfortable in. Not ideal, it's not perfect, but Willink and Thomas are probably in a lot worse shape. So it would be great for them programmatically. The other side of that coin, and there is a cost savings, like, you know, our BOSI's bill has, their BOSI's costs, last three years since we've done that, been able to hold our BOSI's costs for tuition flat. That would have been projected to be probably double if we didn't, what it is now. From about five, I think we're at 5 million, we easily would have been in the $10 million tuition range. And those are real budgetary dollars.
Saving that money over about, over about three years.
So that's a huge budget to budget change. The two, or, you know, maybe three or four we're on now, is the benefit for every, for all the other programs. At the elementary, you're going to be able to keep class sizes. It gives us a swing space of, in essence, six more elementary classrooms. Granted, they're at Schlegel, but if we want to keep going down that road, maybe we could talk about UPK changing up, looking at enrollment trends, which will free up more classes. And some of the other elementary buildings, that an extra fourth grade section can go from 24 to 20. And we could look at that and have that conversation because those classrooms are now available. And then definitely at the, at the secondary level. At Thomas, they're capped out, you know, they're, the ring's a Webster. Every courtyard created is another expansion of Webster, and it's a dead end, and there's no easy, you know, facility solution to help programmatically there. I think they would like to get those classrooms back to be able to do some more on the elective side as well. So those are the programs.
It benefits all students, not just this particular program.
Correct, yep.
Just for clarification, the building condition survey is what drives that. I mean, most of, if I look at most of this, it is things that we need to do. Many of the parking lots need some reconstruction, especially because there's so many parents driving to school and dropping off. If you've been down Plank Road and Scribner, it's a train wreck, Willink, Publishers Parkway. So I understand all of that. The other thing, I guess my comment is, the HVAC, we've heard for years, the number one request is air conditioning in so many buildings. So I guess this answers that as well.
So. And we don't shut down anymore. I mean, this year, taking, I think, two elementary, half of Willink and all of Schrader offline, and where are we going to put all of our summer stuff? You know, and that was just four out of 11 buildings. I mean, we're, we're running 24/7 with whether it's community programs, school-based programs, summer enrichment camps, you know, things like that are, we're, we're no longer, all right, June 30th, we close the doors and we'll see you back two weeks before school starts. I mean, we're busting all the, bustling all the time, and it just gives us more options. Because for summer school, we could only go to these buildings that had AC for those programs. So it takes 50% of the rotation out already, you know.
Yeah, let me just add to that too, Brian, I mean, credit recovery is just alone. We brought back 400 kids in regards to that, you know, we used to send them always to summer school. And that has dramatically changed, and that's at the secondary level. And this year, we're super excited because elementary actually had an opportunity to kind of dive into that as well. And so we had a lot of learning going on for some of our elementary kiddos this summer, which was fantastic. So just, we brought, like Brian said, I mean, I'm really just reiterating what Brian said, but we've brought so many learning opportunities than professional development. We have more opportunities of professional development in the summer, being able to have those spaces that.
Back here.
Back here, yeah, exactly.
And it seems to me, and all of our thought exchange, or the one thought exchange that we did, the number, two number, two top priorities were smaller class size if possible and HVAC improvements. So I guess, okay. All right, so it answers them, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
We asked a lot of questions, I have to say, like, prior to leading up to today. So anyone who eventually watches this at home or is watching it now, these are like maybe a twentieth of the amount of questions that we asked throughout the summer. So thank you, Brian, for constantly going back and revamping and answering our questions. And even while you're on vacation, remotely dialing in. So it has been a lot of work coming to this point, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. With that, do I have, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say thank you because you brought us into it as new board members and took the time to meet with us to explain things in detail. So while we're all going, yes, 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 there was a lot of input to bring us to this point, and I thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Excellent point, yep. All right, with that, can I have a motion to approve? Wait, I'm looking at the wrong thing, sorry. Motion to approve moving forward with the capital project and vote in December 2022. And motion to approve the resolution of intent to serve as lead agency. Jen, moved. Charlie, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six nothing.
Thank you.
And you're done, right? Calleen, code of conduct, right?
Catherine, move.
Oh, okay. It's like, did I just accidentally?
So we have a great code of conduct committee that met several times. Linda was on that committee as well during the school year. And one of the things that we wanted to work on, and this has been feedback from students, is our dress code. And so we've got no changes to make to it today because we really want to be more thorough with the data that we gather. I did want to give you just a little bit of information. We had a thought exchange for our parents where we had 1,196 participants for 641 thoughts and 17,201 ratings on those thoughts. We had 1,731 students in grades four through 12. They took a survey and provided feedback, and we had 491 staff members. So we had a really good participation rate. And when we looked at all that information, we're like, we need more time to really, to do a more thorough job and get more feedback. There were a lot of great comments from the students and the staff as well as the thought exchange. So sort of a preview for you, we hope to come back maybe in January or so to relook at the code of conduct. But for right now, we only have one minor change. And if you're looking at the code, it's on page 15, it's the 10th bullet down under violation of criminal code. And it really comes from our superintendent's hearings. It is around, previously it said possession, sale, manufacture, or use of drugs or alcohol when on school property or at school events. And we are adding or being under the influence of drugs or alcohol. of drugs or alcohol. Because when it came to some of our superintendent hearings, the students may not have had anything on them, but they came to school in, in intoxicated state, but because that was not in our code of conduct, we couldn't make that statute stand. So that's why we're adding this piece to support our buildings as, as they work with students. So that would be the only change that we are recommending at this time for the twenty-two, twenty-three code of conduct. Are there any questions?
Thank you, we appreciate that explanation.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Kelly.
Alright, may I have a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three code of conduct? Mike, second, Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Six nothing.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to the district goals. Before we approve, I just wanted to say that there was so much collaboration among the board, cabinet, leadership, teachers, staff in general, that went into this. So the collaboration alone, I feel, is just going to be amazing to start the school year. So hopefully everyone's had a chance to look at it. We had a couple little minor wording changes, but all in all, the amount of input that was taken into consideration from all avenues, I think, is amazing. And we're really looking forward to a great school year.
Yeah, we had just the one, we just had the one word we wanted to talk about tonight?
Yeah, do we want to look at the pedagogy?
And I think I wanted to look over towards Charlie, because I know, Charlie, this was one of the things that we had all talked about, and you kind of helped lead us on this, so it's really that last bullet. What are your thoughts, or what are the board's thoughts on continuing to refine the art and science of teaching, or continuing to refine pedagogy? Do we have a, do we have a thought?
I like the art and science of teaching.
Okay.
Pedagogy seems like a big word, and it's.
Okay.
I'm fine, I'm well considered, but also I understand where the history is behind the art and science, so.
So we'll do that this year and see where it takes us, and then maybe we end up with pedagogy potentially next year or something, okay? We good with that?
I'm good with that, yeah.
The words are important, but the execution is more important.
That's very true. That's very true.
Very good, I like that. So, but.
Alright, on that note.
Thanks, Charlie, for.
Yeah, thank you. It was a good conversation, it was good to understand, like you said, the history, yeah. Alright, motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three district goals. Linda, second, Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, six nothing. And liaison and committee participation. I think we're pretty finalized with the committees and the participation. We're going to hopefully approve it, but then maybe a quick policy update, right? Can we do that?
You can do a policy update.
Just a little one.
Yeah.
I thought we talked about that. And Jen and Shanna and I were able to attend the law conference this summer, so we just have a little update on that as well. But we can do, we can approve it first, if everyone's okay with the assignments. Motion to approve the liaison and committee participation assignments. Charlie, second?
Second.
Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Charlie joined us on the policy committee. So we met two weeks ago, maybe? Week ago? I, I don't know, I can't.
Close check of time, yeah.
In the summer, the days all, right? Okay. So we are continuing to work on that. Again, we enlisted the help of Erie One BOSI's. So we are hoping, we have one more meeting in a couple, in, in September.
August. Do we? September twenty-second, or twenty-second? Thank you.
The goal would be to, by October, start reviewing them section by section, so that eventually we can approve them, and hopefully not have two working documents come the end of the school year. But we are steadily in, working on that. It's a very large manual, but we're working on it. Fair enough?
Yes, no, it's perfect. So we'll have more information in October, for sure, at our October meeting.
Yes. And the law conference.
And as Janice mentioned, Shanna and Janice, you both attended in person. I did the online version. Basically, the law conference is just meant to update board members on, you know, current legislation, new Supreme Court cases, or anything new that we need to be aware of. And there was really just about six main issues that we looked at. The first one is very clearly teacher shortages, and looking at, you know, reviewing legal qualifications for hiring, and all of those vary based on what the assignment is, the length of the appointment. So it's just a matter of looking at what the requirements are for filling those positions. And then they also discussed some potential solutions, for example, streamlining certification. I know, which is also, the NICID is also talking about how to do that as well, so. Supplementary certifications and internship certificates, so people can actually learn how to do the job while doing the job. And then additional, additional state subsidies to maybe find ways to help people pay for the certification programs as well. And just a reminder that all times contractual obligations must be honored. They also looked at reviewing some current and new laws, so looking at APPR, the Adult Survivors Act, criminal possession of firearms, and sensitive locations, FOIL regulations, healthcare workers bonuses, high school diploma changes, human right law, human rights law, and a whole bunch of other areas where those are just kinds of things they just reminded us of, to be aware of. Looking at the increase in FOIL requests, we reviewed the rules and regulations around those. And just a reminder that all FOIL requests are handled by district lawyers, which increases district costs, so just something that we should be aware of. Collective bargaining contracts, we also discussed, looking at how COVID inflation, economic challenges are driving contract negotiations, while also facing teacher shortages, so we have to keep that in mind. Court rulings of significance, importance focused on things like religious practices in public schools, private schools versus public schools, around financial responsibility and transportation, looking at APPR, and then in terms of long-term substitutes and the awarding of seniority based on the conditions under which that person was hired. And then also some issues being looked at by the Commissioner of Education across the state, so Board of, Board of Education Member Conduct, child abuse allegations, elections, home instruction situations, mascots, residency, student discipline, and tenure. So those are just a lot of the big issues that are kind of at the forefront of all legal discussions at this point.
Yeah. It's a lot, but it's super interesting. Shannon, I, being there, too, it was, it was a lot, like, I feel like you're taking notes fast and furious, but it was very interesting. Thank you, Jen, that covered everything.
Thank you.
I know, that's a good one.
That was a great review.
Alright, and last, we have the consent agenda. So, the explanation, our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Roberts Rules provide for a consent agenda, listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board subcommittee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Everyone's had a chance to review the consent agenda? So can I have a motion to approve all consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent? Mike, Charlie second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I don't believe we have any speakers tonight. Just a couple dates, August twenty-second is the new employee breakfast, followed by our board retreat, and August thirtieth will be opening day for all staff, and Tuesday, September sixth, will be the first day at school. I didn't steal your thunder by saying that, did I?
Not at all, it's great.
I know, it's exciting.
So exciting.
I don't know if there's anything else? Very exciting, alright. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn the business meeting?
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
Jen? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.